Tonight's meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media, channels 191, 192, and 193. They're looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. And we'd like to thank Ryan for taping tonight's meeting for us. Superintendent Follins, could you have some announcements for us?
Yes, I do. The next regular school committee meetings are March 14th, April 11th, and 25th, May 9th and 23rd, June 13th and 27th. There's a half day of school on Friday, March 3rd due to teacher professional development. There are half days of school on Thursday and Friday, March 16th and 17th due to parent teacher conferences. There is no school Friday, April 14th due to Good Friday. There is no schools April 17th through April 21st due to Patriots' Day and spring break. There's a half day of school on Friday, May 5th due to teacher professional development. There is no school on Monday, May 29th due to Memorial Day, and currently the last day of school is scheduled for Friday, June 23rd, which is a half day of school for students. The East Hampton Health Youth Coalition is sponsoring the next session of the Strengthening Families program on Wednesday, starting March 8th from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock at Whitebrook Middle School. And there's information on our Facebook page and also in the last two superintendent updates on how to register for that program. The EHS Spring Open House for 8th grade students and new students and their families is scheduled for March 1st from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM. And this evening, there is an informational forum on the school building project in association with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And it begins at 7 o'clock in an hour, and it will be taped by East Hampton Media. So if you're not able to join us here this evening, you will be able to see the entire program on East Hampton Media.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to add that because that forum is taking place at 7:00 PM in this meeting space, we're in a bit of a time constraint for tonight's meeting, and we'll be looking to move things along rapidly to be sure that we're finished before 7:00 PM. So, I also wanted to make note of the EHS Spring Open House that is March 1st tomorrow night from 6 to 8:00 PM is also for current families to visit, follow their student's schedule, meet their teachers that are new this semester, and we hope that all current students' families will come.
The new families are invited to come at 6:00, and then current students and their families at 6:30.
6:30, correct. There's an orientation type for around from 6 to 6:30.
And there are many really good events planned for that open house, so I encourage you to attend.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along, do we have any correspondence?
We have internal correspondence that, from the board itself, that went to the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's dated the 2nd, sorry, the 22nd of February. This came out of our work last week where we voted to share our view on the proposed amendment to the charter of the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School. You want to read, the whole letter is here.
You know, I think that even though we are a little bit constrained by time, I think it would be worthwhile to read it.
All right.
I think that would be a very well-written letter.
Yes.
Yes, it was. When I spoke there last night, I used some of my remarks, but also some of, much of this, though I knew that they had read it, it appeared that the board had actually been inundated late in the week with a lot of reading, and so I did read a section of it. But, "We, the elected members of the East Hampton School Committee, write to assert our opposition to Commissioner Chester's recommendation to increase enrollment at Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion School. We have serious concerns about how this will immediately affect our own district budget as well as other local districts." We'll outline these budgetary implications. But first, we would like to address an even greater concern. Frankly, this proposed expansion seems the expression of an anti-public-school agenda. In November of 2016, the people of Massachusetts overwhelmingly voted in opposition to lifting the cap on charter schools. With this vote, Massachusetts constituents voiced their disapproval of charter school expansion, and they affirmed their implicit commitment to protecting our traditional public school system. This move to nearly double the enrollment at PVC ICS can only be interpreted as an attempt to move around the will of the voters, keeping the cap in name while dramatically increasing charter school enrollment in the valley. There's no existing need that this expansion would claim to fulfill, there are enormous consequences should it come to pass. Charter schools drain public funding away from traditional public schools that serve the vast majority of children in Massachusetts and that welcome children of all demographics. Currently, the student population at Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School is as follows: 3.9% of the students are English language learners compared to 9% statewide; 6.6% of the students have disabilities compared to 17.2% of students statewide; 17.5% are economically disadvantaged compared with 27.4% of students statewide. This charter school is not serving a representative population of Massachusetts children, and it is not serving from under them students from underperforming districts or communities. Charter schools of this type take public funding to serve a privileged minority of students and leave public schools with fewer dollars to serve the students with the greatest needs. In our own home district of East Hampton, we already lose approximately $360,000 per year to this charter school. We will be unable to provide the students in our district with the academic experiences they enjoy now should the enrollment of the school double. We sympathize with the families who choose to send their children to foreign language immersion programs like those available at PVC ICS. We believe that all families should have the option of robust language programs in their neighborhood public schools. The curricula offered by charter schools in western Massachusetts in the arts, sciences, languages is the very same curricula that public schools have been heartbroken to reduce in the wake of funding shortfalls. Rather than putting more public dollars into the very charter schools that have contributed to these budget constraints, we should be investing in the traditional public schools that serve 96% of the children in the Commonwealth. As a final note, we are proud of our local public schools. We believe that equitable public education is the keystone of our democracy, and we are working hard to support its continued vitality. As such, we urge you to vote against this proposed expansion. Respectfully, the members of the East Hampton School Committee. And I'm pleased to report briefly now that, in fact, the vote last night was seven votes against the amendment and two in favor, and so that proposal failed.
Thank you very much. It's great news. And we thank you, special thank you to Marissa and Sarah for composing that letter, and a special thank you to Peter Gunn for attending the State Board of Education meeting to represent our thoughts last night. Okay, moving on to gifts. Do we have any gifts to report?
I do not, unfortunately, have any record of any gifts.
Okay, at this time...
We should address that in the next meeting.
At this ti, this is a public speak portion of our meeting. If anyone would like to come and speak to the committee, you're welcome to do so. And we would just ask if you would limit your speech to one to two minutes, that would be great.
Hello, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Chris Abel. I'm the current EEA unit president, and I just wanted to stop by this evening to thank everyone on the board that took the time to draft the letter, and specifically Peter, for taking your time to travel to Boston yesterday. It's greatly appreciated, and we appreciate your continued support for the students and staff here at East Hampton and public education as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's very nice of you.
Okay, no? Thank you.
We appreciate your support and encouragement. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll be moving on to our subcommittee reports. First up is the Finance Subcommittee, and our subcommittee chairwoman is not here with us this evening, so I will just let you know that we have minutes. We've met twice since our last meeting, on February 16th and February 22nd, and we have minutes in front of you, I believe, to review. We were discussing the budget in both of those meetings. The first was about East Hampton High School and Whitebrook Middle School. No, I'm sorry, the first were the elementary schools, and then the second meeting was about East Hampton High School and Whitebrook Middle School. So we have reviewed that in depth so far, and we have another meeting scheduled for Thursday this week to talk about special education and the budget as a whole. So, more information coming on that soon. Policy Review Subcommittee. Do we have a report from Marissa?
Yeah, we met February 21st last week, and we discussed a number of items, including a change to our entrance age policy and our organization of instruction policy, which we'll be having first readings on in just a moment. And additionally, at our meeting, we reviewed the district's policies for nondiscrimination and inclusive practices for transgender students. While at the national level, there has been a recent retraction of protections for transgender students. We were pleased to have a discussion with Superintendent Follinsby and affirm that East Hampton Public School District remains committed to protecting the rights and dignity of transgender students, and of course also in compliance with Massachusetts nondiscrimination state law. So then as follow-up from that discussion, I'm going to be working with Superintendent Follinsby to create district guidelines to have in all the buildings, which will essentially just put in writing what practices are already occurring in the district. So that's it. So shall we move on to the readings, or?
Yeah, that would be great. Okay.
So, the first proposed policy change is to our entrance age policy, and this is in response to requests from a few families who are looking to enroll kindergarteners who seem prepared for kindergarten but miss the cutoff date by a marginal amount. So our first, our proposed policy for adoption is as follows. "In an attempt to permit children to enter school at the time most appropriate for them individually, the school committee establishes the following policy on entrance age. One, children who will be five years of age prior to the first day of school year during which they wish to enroll will be eligible to enter kindergarten for that school year. The admission of children whose birthdays fall after the first day of school will be solely at the superintendent's discretion. Two, initial admission of children to the first grade or other grades will involve a consideration of both chronological age and the readiness of the children to do the work of those grades."
Thank you, Marissa. Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
Motion to approve the first reading.
Second?
There's been a motion to approve the first reading, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
Our second proposed policy is the organization of instruction, and essentially this is a bureaucratic change to describe how our grades are organized in different buildings, and sort of projecting towards potential changes in the future. "The district offers a diversified educational program compatible with the needs of the community and state standards. The organizational plan is designed to facilitate the philosophy of educating every student each to his or her fullest potential. The primary elementary/middle level includes schools with pre-K, kindergarten through grade eight. The secondary level consists of schools with grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. Special education services are integrated across each grade level in all schools. The organization is designed to meet the standards established within the curriculum frameworks as required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, time and learning regulations, and to serve the needs of all students."
So before we approve the reading of this particular policy, what we need to do is specify in this policy that our current configuration is pre-K through four, five through eight, and nine through 12. But our proposed configuration, when we have a new facility, will be pre-K through eight and nine through 12. Does that make sense to everyone? Just so we're clear, current and planned, future. Okay. All right, so we'd like to approve the first reading of this with that amendment? Would anyone like to?
Motion to approve the proposed organization of instruction.
Second?
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
Second amendment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with the amendment, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next would normally be our Collaborative for Educational Services update, and Cynthia Kuzinski is our CES representative. She's not here this evening, so we will be moving on to our Student Activities update. And at this time, I would like to introduce and welcome Tess McCollum. She's a senior at East Hampton High School and is going to be filling in as our student representative for the remainder of this year. She's a senior at the high school, and we are very pleased to have you join us.
Thank you.
And welcome. And we would love to hear from you if you have anything you'd like to update us on, on what's happening at the high school.
Totally. So, as you mentioned, there's going to be the open house tomorrow night, which is going to be really great. We have student tours already planned and collectivities, so I encourage everyone to attend that if they can. This Friday, during our half-day, we also have, the Renaissance Program is throwing a party for all the students who have attended class on time and come to school every day and have great grades. So, it's a little celebration that the school throws for the students who deserve it and really try hard, and it's very exciting, and I'm excited to be there. This is a recent update from the Drama Club, the March play of You Can Ticket With You, which was scheduled for the 16th through the 18th, has now been postponed to the following weekend, the 23rd to the 25th. Because of the parent teacher conferences that were happening 16th through the 18th, they wanted to make sure everyone could attend the parent teacher conferences and the play, so we just postponed the play to the following weekend. And I think that is it for the most recent updates.
Right. And I'd also like to mention a certain someone has a lead role in that play, namely Tess. So everyone needs to play into go. I'm sure it's going to be amazing.
Who also had a lead role in The Wizard of Oz?
Right. She was the most amazing wicked witch you could ever imagine.
She absolutely was.
Thank you, Tess. So, thank you, Tess. Okay, the next item on our agenda is something we're adding new on a regular basis, and it's called Education Policy Update, and Marissa has agreed to provide us with updates on state and federal issues. Marissa?
Sure. And if I can actually combine this item and the following item, I'm going to report on the forum that I attended on February 16th called the Massachusetts Foundations Budget Review Forum. And just to give the sort of quickest of background, the foundation budget is essentially this formula that the state uses to determine funding for each district based upon the local tax base and then also the sort of projected costs of educating the students in that district. And that formula has been unchanged since it was first created in 1993, I think. And so in 2014, there is a review commission established to take a look at this formula and see, is it reflecting the realities of costs? And in 2015, the report came out that, I won't go into in detail here, but demonstrated that there are a lot of places where the costs and realities of education have changed since this original formula was created, from sort of inclusive practices in special education and the rise in special education needs to the cost of vocational programs and English language learner programs, low-income programs, these types of things. And so the report that came out of this commission said that overwhelmingly, local districts are bearing a disproportionate burden of the costs of educating students, and that the state should be providing more funding. And so the question, since this report came out, is how do we actually get the state to implement full funding of these recommendations? And so the local legislators who were at this forum, the insight that they had to offer is that we really need to, as citizens and as school committee members, we need to be bothering our local representatives and senators about this issue all the time. You know, they have a lot of priorities and a lot of things they're working on, and if they don't hear from us, then it's easy to ignore this problem, but if there would be some way that we could work with other school committees and sort of select a priority and say, together, we're going to really try to put pressure on our local reps on this given issue, so that way they can in turn take it to Beacon Hill and put pressure on the state. So, in light of that, since this forum, Senator Sonia Chang Diaz has filed a Senate bill, Senate 1905, which implements full funding of the recommendations from this review. And so it would be something I'd be interested in talking about with the committee about how we could, whether we want to issue a statement, or whether we want to make phone calls, or how we want to urge our local legislators to support the passage of this bill in the Senate. So that was my report on the budget review. But then the other thing I just wanted to mention really quickly that came out of the discussion at that forum was that, from the perspective of the legislators who were there, they were suggesting that the vulnerabilities to public education in Massachusetts from changes that might occur at the federal level are more likely to occur not coming out of the Federal Department of Education, but coming out of federal health care issues. Because if there are cuts to Medicaid, Massachusetts as a state is still going to be bearing the burden of costs for health care for its citizens. And so therefore, they won't have enough, as much money to spend on education budgets. And then also, there's a certain amount of reimbursements that districts get from Medicaid, particularly for certain services for special education. And so if there are cuts to Medicaid, that's going to hurt us on both sides. And so it was a really good reminder of the ways that our public education system is fully embedded in all these other contexts, and that we, you know, kind of have to be paying attention to all the different places that are going to affect our budget, local, state, and federal. That's it.
Thank you, Marissa. The state advocacy issues seem to be endless these days. Thank you very much. Thank you for attending that meeting and for the update. And speaking of opportunities to meet with our senators and representatives, this Friday, Nancy Follinsby, Marissa, and I will be attending...
And Peter.
And Peter?
Mm-hmm.
The Connecticut Valley Superintendent Roundtable Meeting with our senators and representatives at the Delaney House, and it'll be a great opportunity for us to speak with all of them about our education-related issues and concerns. So we look forward to that opportunity on Friday. Next, Peter, would you, do you have anything else you'd like to fill us in on with regard to the meeting last night that you attended?
Well, I, thank you. I would like to, just briefly, I know we're up against time pressure with the upcoming meeting, but I do want to point out that there were three other speakers there, the Chair of the Pellam Elementary Schools, I think Kara's name is Castinson? I apologize if I don't have that right. Peter Demlin from Amherst was there as well, as well as Michael Morris, who's the acting superintendent in Amherst. And I think that they made tremendous contributions and led the way. I was the last to speak, and so I got to listen to all of them, and I was actually madly revising my remarks, so as, to not be redundant, because we were under a 10-minute time limit, and the meeting was already four hours old by the time we spoke. It began, just as an aside, because I will say this, you will not believe that it is true, but the meeting opened when there was a discussion about another proposed charter school that will be opening in Westfield in 2018 with a panel of four individuals, one of whom was an attorney from a Washington-based law firm hired by the Republic of Turkey, who essentially made the argument that the charter school was a front organization for the Gulon community that was behind the coup in Turkey this past summer, the attempted coup. So, if you can imagine the kind of curveball that throws into a meeting about charter schooling, that's really what happened. And there was a lengthy and extended discussion about whether the Attorney General, the FBI, the CIA, whoever else needed to be involved before they could make a decision. Ultimately, they did. In fact, overwhelmingly, the State Board for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education did approve the creation of new charter schools and amendments to other charter schools. They rejected the proposed amendment to the Chinese immersion school, I believe, for three reasons, and I'm still organizing my notes. It was a late night getting back. I expected to leave Boston at 7:00. We didn't speak until 9:15. So I think the first and foremost piece is that people's voices matter. If you show up in the room and you offer your thoughts and ideas, I think it makes a difference. I think it influences people. Most of the votes up to the time of the vote on the issue that I was there to speak on were close or decidedly pro-charter school. In some cases, 8-0. There had been one that was 4-3, but most of the voting was going in that direction, and I was quite concerned about how we would be able to persuade enough people. I think the question that has occurred to me since then is, what were the arguments that persuaded the swing votes on the board? Clearly, the commissioner, who was, by the way, complimentary of East Hampton, in my remarks, I opened by inviting members of the board to come out and to see the schools in the city, and he was quick to remind everyone that he had been here and that he felt that East Hampton was doing great things, complimented us on the high school, and then said, all that said, I still, in presenting this endorsement of this amendment to expand the Chinese immersion school. So, I think that the two arguments that made the most difference to the people in the room who were undecided were that costs matter and that the current funding formula is flawed. In fact, one of the people on the staff for Commissioner Chester acknowledged that the design of the legislation creating a regional school that then picks two or three or four students from every grade in every school around it achieves a great deal of revenue for the charter school, but leaves the schools that lose the students with no capacity to recover operating expenses. If three second-grade students leave, there's nothing that East Hampton, or Pellam, or Amherst can do to recoup those costs. So I think that argument was persuasive. I also think that the argument, and Ed Doherty spoke most eloquently to this, he's a member of the board, that the quality of the schools that students are leaving matters. To him, and I think it mattered to other people, and to hear what was going on in Pellam, what was going on in Amherst, what's going on here in East Hampton in terms of the number of Level 1 schools we have, our success in reducing the achievement gap, and the overall support and progress of the existing public schools in the community of East Hampton and others, also persuaded people. And so, you know, it was a tremendous experience. I'm exhausted, but I'm still running on some adrenaline from last night, because really, as the votes kept coming in for, yes, we're going to establish this charter school, yes, we're going to expand that charter school, yes, 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 I really feared that it was going to be four and a half hours being there only to see the vote go the other way, and I was, quite frankly, stunned. The Chair of the Committee, Paul Sagan, who is a strong advocate for charter schools, voted against the amendment, which was surprising, as did some other folks. I've got tally sheets and notes, and when I get a chance to get caught up with work, I'll organize this, because I do believe that despite last night's outcome, the work is still before us. I frankly think that the tide, if you look at the overall result of last night, there was a net growth of charter schooling in the Commonwealth by a tremendous amount. Oh, I should also mention that Barbara Mataloni of the MTA spoke, and spoke eloquently. She had the good fortune to speak at 5:05. And then all of a sudden, the Hampden Science Charter School just took over the meeting, and we were having discussions about, well, how do we know who these vendors are? It was crazy. It was really crazy.
Wait, that one got approved?
4-3. If my notes are correct, yes, it was 4-3. And there was really, you know, as I said, a boatload of information came to the board, apparently Friday night at 5:00, making allegations about this, and I know that we're in public, and I want to be very careful. I'm merely reporting what, to me, was an extraordinary conversation. They were passionate people on both sides of that issue, and then there was passion, I think, at the end in the discussion about the Chinese immersion school, and I think the voices that mattered were the people in the room. So I think it was worth going, and I would encourage, I think the letter that we drafted as a group, that Sarah and Marissa worked so hard to put into final form, was terrific. And, you know, it's democracy in action, but even though we sort of won the battle last night, I think the war over the support for public education, the other side came away with more wins last night. So I think the work, a lot of work needs to be done, and I'm excited, I'm excited to do it, because I do think there's reasonable people in the room. I even think Commissioner Chester acknowledged, although he didn't say this, but it was my sense as the meeting moved along, is that, you know, they made a reference at one point to not wanting to rehash Question 2, but then they ended up talking about Question 2. If you look at the tape or the minutes, I think it's clear that the discussion that came up with Question 2 still resonates with many, many people, and as part of the broader budget issues that you were describing. And Marissa, in your report, figuring out if charter schools are going to continue to exist in the Commonwealth, they can't move forward with the present funding model and the present 9% and 10% caps, because everyone in the room, from the staff of DESI to the members of the board, to the people who are there speaking, can just, you know, the numbers are, there's no alternative set of facts. There's one set of facts about the economic impact that it has on the sending districts, and that really, you know, and to those who suggest that the discussion of financing, you know, should be set aside, and I've said this before, it's the most overused joke that I make, but to discuss public schooling without talking about public funding is like asking Mrs. Lincoln, "Other than that, what'd you think of the play?" Right? I mean, it comes down to, do we have the resources to provide the services that our kids need?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. We're grateful that you made that trip yesterday. Thank you very much. And just on one similar note to follow that discussion... And just on one similar note to follow that discussion, we would, Marissa reached out to Michael Moriarty, who is the only Western Massachusetts State Department of Education member there is on the Board.
That's if you assume Western Massachusetts starts at 495.
At 495.
He's the only person who lives outside 495, who's on the committee.
And expressed a desire to meet with him to understand more about the work of the Board, for him to understand more about our work and our mission and goals. And he was very interested in meeting with us. So what I wanted to do is mention that-
He echoed that last night. I spoke with him before the meeting and he said that he was very, he said, I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for the Board, but I look forward to working. He knows. Mayor Kazir well and said that he would be happy to meet.
What I'd like to propose is that we schedule a work session and see if this would potentially work for him. But throw out the date of Tuesday, February 21st.
February 21st?
Uh, March 21st, March 21st. So it happens, I don't have a calendar with me. Tuesday, March 21st. That is a Tuesday, correct?
That's not one of the days we have a meeting, is it?
No. We have another tentative plan to meet with the Executive Director of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees on the 28th, Tuesday the 28th. But if that date would work for you, March 21st, I'd like to propose that date to him.
Like in the evening, like in New York?
Yeah. And we'll make it a work session, maybe at about 6:00 PM. We'll find out if that would work for him or what timing it would be. But I'll propose that if that seems to work for everyone so far.
Yeah, good to know.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
So I have two items on my report this evening, the first being the school calendar. The union membership had an opportunity to look at it and we had a good conversation in our anchor team about the calendar. And so I'm putting forth the calendar that, for you to approve this evening.
I just have one comment, and that is we seem to be missing the color coding key code that goes with this, to know like what the red, blue, green on the document itself.
We haven't put that in before. I think-
I swear we do.
Well, Sue says we don't.
For the half-day, full-day?
So red is vacation. No, red is not vacation?
No, red is vacation.
Right. I'm just trying to say that when I looked at it, I tried to translate it. Blue is teacher professional development days, correct?
Yes.
Red's vacation.
Green is parent-
Greener parent-teacher conferences. And yellow, I was going, it's the opening days.
Half-days.
Are they all half-days?
And the last days.
So the 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th of September are all half-days?
Are you sure? Could we add one? It would make me very happy. Okay.
So those are all half-days? The whole first week?
No.
No.
See, if we had a code.
I know, that's what I tried to get. I know, so-
The first week is their staggered openings for kindergarten visiting for students.
Blue is half-days. Thank you.
Yes. Does anyone have any comments, questions?
You may confuse people.
Maybe take the colors out?
There are some days that are full days and there are some days that are half-days.
But do the colors mean something?
They're just days covering your senses.
Maybe we should just highlight them all in the same color and like, just in case people are trying to find patterns from their hearts.
I think our staff is used to this color coding, you know?
If there's a way for you to do it that's easy to understand, that would be great. Okay. All right. Does anyone have any comments, questions, suggestions about the schedule itself? No? Would we like to approve? Motion to approve? Motion to approve the 2017, 2018 school calendar? Second?
Draft 2A.
Draft 2A?
So, sorry, I lost mine. Can I, I just, so the first day of school is the 5th, correct? For the students?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
I just want to note that for anyone else out there who, like me, believes that school, in a formal institutionalized sense, should not begin until after Labor Day. I realize that teachers have to show up ahead of time.
I was going to note that.
But for the kids, I think whenever we can have a calendar workout where they don't have like two days of classes and then Labor Day weekend and then the teachers get to start all over again from scratch the next week, just to count days and to let summer run, right? This is New England. We're, you know, the summer matters to our economy as well as to our culture. Letting the kids wait until Labor Day is great.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Strong.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion to approve the school calendar for the 2017, 2018 school year, draft 2A. And it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, next we need to approve, oh, did you want to say anything about that?
You may say it.
I'm sorry. Guess I'm so nervous about our time.
No, we're doing, we're doing good.
I'm on a roll.
I'm gonna be okay.
Okay. Next, we need to approve the East Hampton High School Program of Studies. And I'd just like to mention that we went over the 2017, 18 program of studies in great detail at our last meeting. Principal Burke was here and Assistant Principal Wilson was here. And we went through it page by page, line by line, at that time. And now we have come to the point, we also have a summary of all of the changes in our packets. Now we have come to the time of officially approving that document. And I'm wondering if we have any other questions or concerns or comments before we do that.
Why wouldn't we adopt it?
Okay. Is there a second? Second. Okay, we have a motion to adopt the Program of Studies for the 2017, 2018 school year. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Can I make that comment separate from the endorsement of this?
Yes.
This document that we have now is great. And next year, let's have, before we do this, okay? Because this is exactly the great way of, you can read through the whole document, but you might miss something. You get tired. This tells you to go back in and be sure to double-check that you've looked at each of these pages. So please.
So Principal Burke did hear you at the last meeting and that's why he's done this and we will do it every time now.
And he'll continue to highlight the document as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we have warrants and payroll.
Okay, so, where's the pink sheet? I'm looking for my directions. I get nervous when Tom's in the room because I know that he thinks that by now I should have mastered this.
I don't.
I move to, I still haven't. It's a work in progress. I move to approve the school payroll dated March 2nd, 2017, in the amount of $481,709.62.
There's been a motion. It's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated March 2nd, 2017, in the amount of $481,709.62. All those in favor? Motion passes.
I move to approve the school payroll dated, oh wait, sorry. I got it. I was nervous last night. I think tonight I wouldn't be so nervous. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated March 3rd, 2017, in the amount of $149,342.18.
Second. There's been a motion. It's been seconded to approve this accounts payable authorization for payment dated March 3rd, 2017, in the amount of $149,342.18. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Great. I move to approve the school payroll dated February 16th, 2017, in the amount of $483,235.80.
Second. There's a motion. It's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated February 16th, 2017, in the amount of $483,235.80. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Sorry. I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 16th, February 2017, in the amount of $547,386.21.
Second. There's a motion. It's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated February 16th, 2017, in the amount of $547,386.21. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Okay. We're moving reverse through the calendar. I apologize. I didn't organize them backwards. I move to approve the school payroll dated 2, February 2017, in the amount of $479,822.47.
Second. There's a motion. It's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated February 2nd, 2017, in the amount of $479,822.47. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And finally, I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 2, February 2017, in the amount of $243,679.69.
Second. There's been a motion and it's been seconded to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated February 2nd, 2017, in the amount of $243,679.69. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Okay. So we'll need to do some signing. I would just like to remind any citizens or anyone who's watching that the line items for these measures are, particularly on the ones where the date has gone by, members of the school committee individually come in and read and review these and sign them in advance. So even though we're authorizing huge sums of money on relatively short notice here, they actually have been examined. And the folks in the business office are terrific at answering. I always have a zillion questions about where money's going. So we're doing our due diligence there. I would move the, huh, they write a cheat sheet for me now, Tom, right? Motion to approve the minutes of the, really seriously, January 24th?
I think that's just the end.
I think that one's, yes? We haven't done January 24th? I thought we did. Motion to approve the minutes of the January 24th school committee meeting.
Second. There's been a motion to approve the minutes for the January 24th school committee meeting and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And then a motion to approve the minutes of the February 21st, 2017 work session.
Second. Motion to approve the work session on February 21st, 2017, the minutes for the work session. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
I was going to say-
Motion passes. Okay, we have two out-of-state field trip requests.
Right. Motion, sorry. Motion to approve the East Hampton High School trip to New York for April, right, it's the April 5th one?
April 5th.
Yes. Yes. This is with Ann Davis and Christine Savaro picking the GSA and Drama Club.
Second. There's been a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for East Hampton High School on April 5th to New York City. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And then a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for Center Peppin Elementary. There's a host of teachers that are taking students to Connecticut Science Center on May 11th.
Okay. There's a motion to approve the Center Peppin trip to Connecticut on what day did you say?
The 11th.
May 11th.
On May 11th?
May 11th, 2017.
It's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Do we have a-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, sorry.
Second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
Before you depart, if folks could sign-